All right, I'd like to welcome everybody. There's four of us present, but I'll have my phone out because Andrea is joining us via phone call. So we will all be present for any votes or anything that's taking place. I am grateful that we are in a different location today. So this is our second touring, well, our third if you count the district office, but to be able to come down and see our schools and have the opportunity to sit in a little different location, I really appreciate that joy. Thank you to our high school crew for taking us on a tour, showing us the good, the bad, and the pretty. I'm not going to go with ugly. We saw some great opportunity, things that are going on in our high school. We looked at the track, we went and looked at our ag building, and in our gym, looked at a few different things that we'll have to pay attention to. Grateful for this wonderful school, for the teachers and the faculty. We have a fantastic set of schools, fantastic system here. Appreciate all of you that are here and the faculty that support Weezer School District. With that, let's jump right into our meeting. Mr. Doolan, let's hear your report for us.
All right. Evening, Mr. Chairman, ladies and gentlemen of the board. First off, I'd like to give you an update on the color raffle. As of 3 o'clock today, we've earned over $8,000, 99 supporters, which is 8% of our goal. So if you ask yourself who's leading the competition, I'm glad you asked me. Cheer teams lead with $900, followed by the middle school, 825, and everybody else just puffers in after that. But it appears that everybody's showing some love, getting some love right now as far as some money's concerned. As you maybe don't know, the SRV winner awards just came out, and we have a lot of awards. I'd like to read them if I could. Boys' basketball, sharpshooter, Colin Cook won that award. Most valuable player went to Josh Spizer. In girls' basketball, clutch performer went to Kendall Ryan Nielsen. Defensive Player of the Year, Mr. Larue might know this person, Kylie Larue. Most valuable player was Kendall Ryan Nielsen. In wrestling, the pin queen was Audrey DeLeon. Outstanding wrestler was Cash Cobb, and most valuable wrestler again was Cash Cobb. In cheer, the technique excellence award went to Kiana Olivera, and the leadership award went to Tatum Clary. So there's only 20 awards given out, and I think that's very good math. That's over three quarters of the awards we brought home. So great, great, great job for all the student athletes. I'd like to, if I could, real quick, discuss a disclaimer about the supplemental levy. Now, the pie chart, everybody's probably seen the pie chart, it depicts, as you know, two years. So what that really means is it's two years of $750,000 each year, which, again, not very good in public math, but private math, but I think that's 1.5 million. So if you add everything up, it's going to be over, we need more than that, but again, that's what we're asking for, is 1.5 million or 750 for two years. Now, I looked today, and a new track is going to cost about between 850K and a million dollars, if not a little more. So a new track's going to be really expensive. A summer school, if I could, the dates are 3 June through July the 11th, and we're going to do something new this year. We're not going to meet on the 4th of July. Ms. Wendy Clark's going to be our administrator, and she's figured out day-wise and hour-wise that we don't have to meet on the 4th of July, so we're going to take that day off, which is pretty cool. Never done that before that I know of, so. Kindergarten registration's coming up, 11 and 12 April. By appointment in Pioneer School, your student must be present for testing, and they must bring with them their birth certificate and immunization records. And last but not least, as you know, we just closed out parent-teacher conferences, and Pioneer had 90%, Park had 82%, the middle school, 6th grade, 53%, 7th grade, 63%, 8th grade, 51%, and the high school only hailed in with 34%. So we, we're going to talk about that, maybe go to appointment only or something for the last parent-teacher conferences for the high school. They don't get very, very good attendance on that, so we'll talk about that, and I'll get your recommendation as we move forward. Other than that, that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you. It might not have got very good attendance at the parent-teacher conference, but we have really good ADA percentage at the high school. I'm reminded it's a little unfair, but the high school still leads that. So good job. Good job to all of our schools, as it goes about. Let's move right into our administrative reports.
Well, let's go ahead and jump to the middle school if I could, because you want to hear from Drew about anything else. I'll be super. Mrs. Clark?
Yeah. So you kind of stole my thunder for a lot of it.
Oh, sorry.
With our percentages and meeting for parent-teacher conferences, but we aren't pleased that our percentage of attendance has improved from January, February, and then it's increased. So that's a good thing. As far as professional development, Mr. Cardenas and I had the opportunity to participate at the district level in meeting with Mrs. Gilbert, and we are looking forward to this Friday then, as part of our professional development with our staff, to kind of implement and look at spreading, looking at our curriculum maps and our vertical alignment and how we align horizontally as well. And then next Monday and Tuesday, Ms. Phillips from the 6th grade and I are going to go to an RTI conference, which is an intervention, we look at an intervention process and how we can meet those needs as well. So I think the timing there is great. Our academic team is participating, has a competition coming up. We've started tennis and track is in full swing, and so things are just kind of plugging along, and we're looking forward to a good ending to the season.
All right. Indian Head, we've kind of had some neat news. Last week, we had two of our graduates from earlier this fall came by looking for letters of recommendation and some transcripts so they can continue their education. They're both heading to the RNA program, or, sorry, CNA program at TBCC, so we're pretty excited about that. And that's kind of what we want out of our kids, and it's good to see that happen. The other thing that's kind of news for us, we're right now kind of in the planning phase. Mrs. Ford, myself, and Mr. Menzey, Mrs. Ford is teaching her Holocaust literature class over there, first period for our kids, and we started planning to take our kids over to the Anne Frank, Idaho Anne Frank Memorial in Boise and the museum that's there. So we're in the planning phases there, but hopefully we'll get that done early in May. So anyway, that's kind of what we've got going on right now. Sorry, any questions?
Okay, just some similar trainings as well that Mrs. Clark mentioned. Eric Estes and I are also going to be attending the RTI training in Idaho Falls that's coming up this weekend. We'll be heading over there on Sunday, and then we'll be having the training Monday and Tuesday of next week, so we're really looking forward to that. We'll have a district team there, so very exciting for all the different schools there. Mrs. Winston and I had the opportunity with Angie Halverson and Danielle Hunt to meet with the planning group for our Southwest Literacy Collaborative. That's the group that we meet with from Homedale, Fruitland, and Payette, and we're really excited about that. Great boots-on-the-ground training for our teachers with regard to literacy, and we put together a plan for next year moving forward, and we're really excited to be a part of that, and we'll continue that great work. And then I didn't know about this, so I didn't include it in my report, but CapEd has a special incentive program out there, and Pioneer School was actually selected to have them bring their hot air balloon, and they inflate the hot air balloon for the school as kind of an incentive and as a fun activity. And we were looking at the calendar, when they could do it and when we can do it, and it's actually going to work out the last day of school. And it's that half-day that we have, so we'll get kids in, get them into class, and then we'll be able to take our entire class, all the kids out into the playground there, and CapEd's going to inflate their hot air balloon there, and I'm sure the kids will be super excited about that. So definitely would like to have you guys present at that if possible, but that's on that half-day. And when I get more details, I'll make sure to share them with Mr. Doolan, and that way the guys can see that. So really excited for the kids and the staff of Pioneer School. Do you guys have any questions for me? All right, thank you.
Mr. President, before we move on to down the line, I'd like to introduce, you know her, but she's filling a new role for us right now as the interim IT Director. Jessica Moschino, doing a great job.
Thank you, Jessica.
Marcy, do you have something to say?
Just, so I started back March 1st. I would like to give two thumbs up to all of the schools. When I first started in August, I was picking up three to five large trash bags of garbage a week off of these grounds. I haven't picked up one since March 1st. So whoever's in charge of that, keep it up. It's amazing to see the pride that we're seeing in the school now. Thank you.
My turn.
Right time.
Let's walk it in just a time. Well, I just would like to celebrate the progress that our kids are making. I know, I'm sure you saw my report, that our rate of improvement continues to beat or exceed kind of the goal we're striving for this year in our special education department, so that's really exciting to me. Also a celebration, you never want to have anything out of compliance, and I know that in the special education world, but I think as I shared last month, there's like, you know, 800 ways you can be compliant on an IEP. But just kind of reflecting on the past 12 months, a year ago this time, we had like 80-plus files that were out of compliance one way or another. We had our readings, that part wasn't, but just the paperwork side of things, and we're down to like 15 at this time this year. So I just think that's kudos to our special education teachers and our team, and just, they're really doing a great job. So I'm just really excited, and that is a celebration. We will be 100% compliant by the end of the year, but that's huge growth to me, and data speaks volumes. So I did want to share that, even though zero, you know, out of compliance is the goal, but I think that's a move in the right direction. Any questions that I can answer for you about special education in the Weezer School District?
I have one question. Yes, Miss, on your report that you gave us, what, can you explain to me the numbers for referrals, consents, and eligibility?
Sure. So at any given time throughout the year, we have teachers or parents who refer their children to be evaluated for special education. So that number just shows you how many kiddos we're actually talking about in the district at any given time. So like on that day, at that time, there were that many students that we were considering potentially referring to special education. Then the team needs, and if we agree that we need to do evaluation, then that leads to an eligibility. Okay? And so, and the, was the other one consent, or something? Consent, sorry. So those are kids that we then have consent to assess, or we're working on having consent. So it's a referral first, then if we agree to do evaluation, we give consent, and then an eligibility. So those numbers are constantly feeding into the next one, so it's just a constant cycle. So on top of managing all the kiddos and serving all the kiddos already identified in special education, that process is also happening. So it's kind of two separate things. But I did also want to share, and I completely forgot, our special education team met last week on Wednesday, and we talked about extended school year, or ESY, and so we're really excited to sort of started small last year with a group of kids for extended school year, and we are looking at kids who are regressing over a break, and how long it's taking them to pick back up. And basically, the kids are taking longer than about two weeks to recoup where they were before the break. That's one of those criteria for extended school year, or if they're on the cusp of meeting one of their goals, and then if they weren't at school, we might lose that progress. So we do have a bigger number of kiddos that we're going to offer that opportunity to this summer, and I'm just really excited to see that because it is a need for our kids. So more will be coming up. Anything else? Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Jessica, with me. Andrea, are you hearing everything fine?
Yes.
Okay. I should have checked with you earlier, but that could have been a really boring few minutes for you guys.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear it off.
Okay, awesome. I just have to point out, I'm sitting here listening to everybody, and we're talking about a calendar, and I don't know about you folks, but is anybody nervous that if I turn the page, that's the last month of this year? It just dawned on me when I, it's amazing. All right, sorry, enough of me. Consent agenda, did everybody as a board, were you able to look at the minutes from our past meeting, school board meeting? Everything, as you looked at it, was there any adjustments or changes that needed to be made? No? Okay.
No.
The current agenda is in front of you, and just like to ask, Mr. Doolan, did you have anything that you know of or Kyla that needed to be changed on this agenda? I didn't see the, thank you. And then our staff considerations. Mr. Doolan.
Yes, I have one resignation. Glad you stayed close.
To whom it may concern, this letter is to confirm that I am resigning my position as a special education extended resource room teacher at Weezer Middle School at the end of the current school year. I have been offered and accepted another position at Round Valley High School in Springerville, Arizona. My final day will be Friday, May 24th, 2024. I have appreciated the opportunities I had to learn and grow here and wish the school every success in the future. Sincerely, Casey Hood.
Mr. President, I could point out real quickly, we did have a couple classified employees that have resigned as well. Our librarian over at the high school, Susan Als, was at it for many years, as you know, and Christine waiting down at Pioneer, was at it for many years as well, so good luck to them in their future chapter of life.
Okay, thank you. Down to the financial report, Ms. Dickerson.
Okay, I still have highlighted the board of trustee in the general fund. I still have the new areas that we're going to, we're working on, since we last met, we worked on a budget over spring break. Been a couple days doing that. We're struggling a little bit. The State Department has not sent us the budget format yet. We haven't, or I guess they did, and then immediately retracted it and said, "Don't use those, that's not right." So they're still building that airplane while it's flying, so they have to get it out to us. But as soon as we do, we can really start crunching some numbers. We do have a pretty good start, Barb and I do, on the amended budget for 2024, and then we will move forward and get the budget for 2025. And we will be having a budget hearing at our June meeting, and I have notified the county of that, so when notices go out for June taxes, they will have that information on there, and that is an open meeting. As far as this month, we are probably at 58.1% of the year expended, and we have 58.29% of our budget expended, so we're right where we should be. That's a good thing. That's a good thing. Like I said, some things are still coming to us from the State Department, the supplemental, when they moved from the enrollment last year to ADA, they knew that schools were going to be hurt by that, which they are, and it was due to about 5%. And so they're still working on that supplemental, and there might be some money based on that to kind of make us whole again. I don't know if that's where that is yet, I can't really speak to that. The federal funds are all doing right, right on. We're doing very well in those. We did get a notice that we had some Esser funds that are still out there and have to be spent by September 30th. The Esser funds have all been allocated, and they will be spent, I promise you, by September 30th, and those are a percent of salaries that we have for some people that we have out there. So we will be moving those employees back into the general fund next year. Do you have any questions for me?
I was going to tell.
No, sorry.
Any questions?
I'll go next.
Okay.
And then I'll speak about the approval and payment of bills. We do have attachments for the AP report. Melanie does not have the checks. I would say it was a very short window between the Monday on the 1st and Monday on the 8th, and Riley's been scrambling because she's got, she's got to end the month and then start the month and get all the bills in there, so usually it's a little bit more 80s or 90s, but instead it was just exactly seven. So she did, she is still working on it, so bills are not, the checks aren't printed, but those are the bills that will be paid.
Can you tell me again, and I believe I've asked you this before, but I forgot, what the DHH program to West Ada School District, third quarter?
We have a student that attends a program there that we are not able to provide in our district, and so we have to pay for that student to attend.
That's right. You've told me this before, I just forgot it was West Ada, who that one goes to.
Exactly.
Thank you. Any other questions? I'll do that.
I like to listen.
Okay, thank you, Karen. Appreciate it. Okay, that is actually the end of our consent agenda, so I would entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve the consent agenda as written and discussed.
I'll second. Motion has been made and seconded to approve the consent agenda as written and discussed and discussed. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Junean, Ms. Kyla?
Okay.
I, is there any community forums comments that were just turned in to you? Okay, we will be, we will be talking about some policies, so if anybody has any, anything they needed to talk about concerning our policies, we'll give an opportunity at that point, just for community input on our policies, and we have had special meetings on it. So this will come up in just a few minutes as well. And that brings us to the WA's report to us.
I'm Nicole Link, and I honestly had some things for you, and then I got the email I was waiting for as I was sitting in the parking lot, and so now I have nothing for you. So I need to do some things, and we'll be in touch. We have a letter that needs to go to requesting opening negotiations here as soon as, I don't even know if the legislature has done, did they finish up their business? I don't know, they probably have.
They're, they're pretty close.
Okay, so we're all waiting. It's a waiting game, but we have a letter for you, and I can get it to you, so I'll email it to those people. I don't know, because I thought I would, but that's it.
Short sweep.
Short and sweet.
Nothing wrong with that.
And we're all glad that we all are surviving, we're celebrating, we're all surviving, say good. And like you said, one more each.
Yeah, it's amazing.
Yes, stay, yes.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Was there a report we wanted to hear from her?
Did you want to hear anything?
No, I'm good.
You're good? That's even shorter.
Any questions?
Yes.
Any questions for her? Thanks. Make them hard. All right, we'll move right along. Moving into our action items and into our policies, we, for those of you that don't know, most of you come to our board meetings, but we have diligently been working on our policy manual, and so we have a few policies to consider as first readings. 20 of them, and then, and when we get done, we'll move in, but we'll have an action to move into our second readings. Is there any, we've all looked at these once before, did we go back through them, and did anybody see any changes that needed to be made before we considered first reading that was not, I didn't, I didn't see them, but. Okay, and we don't need a motion to, we do need a motion to consider these.
To move them to second.
Oh, but to consider as a first reading, we don't, but the ones that we moved to the second, we do, or we need it both?
Yeah, to move that these now be considered for second.
We've read them, consider them as second.
Right.
Okay, so we need a motion to accept these as first and move them into the second reading. And.
All right. I'll make a motion that we see these as a first reading of the policies that are listed under the first reading in our consent, our action idea items, and move them to second reading.
I'll second it. So there's 16 policies in the 5,000s, which very much administrative. Motion has been made to consider these 16 as first reading and move them into the second reading and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 And then we have Form two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight policies to consider as the second reading.
And adoption.
And adopt into the policy manual. But have any questions about those eight? Nine? With no questions, I would entertain a motion to accept them as a second reading and move them into our policy manual.
I can make a motion that we adopt these nine policies as their second reading and into the policy manual.
I'll second that, Karen. Motion to move these nine, also in the five thousands, as a second reading into our policy manual. As we made in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Jeanette. All right, the next item on our agenda, we're in a different building, so we don't, I'm not going to get these up onto our screen. But we have our school calendar to, to talk about again. Oh, sorry. We have, we have a copy here for you, Andrea, when you get here. But we're going to talk about them anyway.
I can print it out.
Okay. So looks like we have, Mr. Davies just ready to talk to us about it.
Yep, that's the, the three-year calendar, based on the one-year calendar that we discussed at our last meeting. Just a few highlights there, so you guys remember. We were, I was able to take that one calendar and go ahead and do the, the next two school years. We were able to keep the things that the committee discussed from feedback that we received. The, the full week at Thanksgiving, the two weeks at Christmas, beginning about the same time in August and finishing before Memorial Day. Just a reminder that for that to happen, the workday for teachers and staff when kids are in school would be from seven forty-five to four thirty. So that is an extension of ten minutes each day. And then the workdays when students are not present would remain eight hours with the eight to four workday. And the highlighted dates on those calendars that you're looking at, that actually does address one of the things that came up earlier about the, the low attendance numbers at the high school for parent-teacher conferences. So that they would actually stay in school and gain two days of instruction when Park School and Pioneer School would be having parent-teacher conferences. So that was a way that they picked up two days of instruction during the year. They will still continue to have parent-teacher conference hours in the evenings in the fall and in the spring. But that did actually add some instructional time for secondary schools. So if you guys have any questions with those calendars, was able to calculate, just want you to know that have counted and recounted about a thousand times on there. I hope that there aren't any mistakes. But did send those to Kyla and I think to Barb to review. And I think those guys are the ones that I want to take a look, make sure that my math is correct. But, but again, I think it's, we, we took into consideration a lot of input from buildings and tried to get all of those things into a calendar. And really feel like there was a lot of compromise on the calendar to make that happen. So do you guys have any questions for me?
Can I ask what the numbers are in the column? Like I'm figuring, I know the thirteen and the ten, you know, but the nine I couldn't figure out.
Yes, the, the red ones are teacher days.
And the blue is students.
The blue ones are the high school. And the, the ones that are green, that the reason that they're, if you look in October and you look at March, they are different. Okay, and they are also different in August because we do orientation days at the elementary school when the high school actually be starting school. So those were the three kind of different little calendars that I wanted to make sure they calculated out. So that's what the red, the blue, and the green numbers indicate. So that we can make those counts. And then if you look at the bottom in those, in those little rectangles, those numbers should correspond as well. Okay, that's why there's a little slash there that might say student days. And they're different is because that's the elementary schools and the secondary schools.
Any questions for Mr. Davies?
Okay, am I not looking at August twenty twenty-sixth currently, first day of school, August thirteenth, but it's not blue? Did, did you already say something about that?
August thirteenth, twenty twenty-five, twenty-six is blue.
Oh, no, no, it's luck.
Twenty-five, twenty-six? Oh, you're twenty-six, twenty-seven.
Sorry, luck.
Okay.
August twenty twenty-six.
Okay.
It looks like that's the first day of school, but then I'm embarrassed.
Andrea, on that one, on, on that right there, it actually should be, and the reason that I did that, if you guys will look, go to May, okay?
May twenty-sixth?
Yeah, on that calendar you're looking at, okay, on May down there, okay? Yeah, twenty-seven is the last contract, twenty-six. I, I apologize. You found my mistake, okay? I actually changed that because if we were to go on that, that, that week right there, we would be starting so early. Every so often, we have to adjust down a week because of where Memorial Day falls. And Memorial Day falls late. It falls on the thirtieth, okay? So when I adjusted the calendars where they're all printed in color, I forgot to go back and change that. So if you guys will take a look here at the top, they should say August seventeen, August eighteen, and August twenty-one, okay?
And no.
Okay, for those workdays. And then the first day, it says, and it should say, August nineteenth, Pioneer Park and Middle School will have orientation. Okay? And then first day, and then that is the first day of school would be the nineteenth for the high school. Okay? And then the, then one right below that, August, it says thirteen, now that should say twenty, will be the first day of school at Pioneer School, Park School, and the Middle School. And I will correct that for you guys and get that out so we can publish that. I apologize for that mistake.
Oh, that's okay. I just was, I just was wondering.
Thank you for catching that.
Good job, Andrea.
So then the all-staff contract days are the seventeenth, eighteenth, twenty-first, not ten, eleven, fourteen?
Correct, correct.
Okay, okay.
I actually did that calendar both ways, starting earlier and getting out earlier. But when I actually did the calculations, it actually works better if we get out a little, because that would have put graduation really, really early as well. So where Memorial Day, where Memorial Day is late in the calendar, it made more sense to do it that way.
Okay. Any other questions? This, having no other questions, thank you, Mr. Davies. And I'd just like to say thanks to the committee, to everybody that puts time in on this, helping put these together. It's a lot of work. Thank you.
Thank you.
And is this, have we heard from the legislature? Is this, this still could potentially change? That's what I, that's how I read it last time, too. So we're, we're, we're moving into the opportunity to adopt this three-year calendar with the knowledge that it could change. So I would entertain a motion if we are in agreement with this calendar. If we're not, entertaining a discussion that needs to be had.
Just as long as it gets updated, twenty-six, twenty-seven?
Yes. Yep, okay. Having no other questions, let's, I would entertain a motion. Chairman, I don't believe the committee's adopted this three-year calendar. But Mr. Davies is set forth with potential changes possibly. Okay?
I'll second.
Mr. LaRue, seconded that. There's been a, I'm just making this a joke. There's been a motion to adopt this three-year calendar as been written with, with tentative changes for the twenty-six, twenty-seven school year. It's been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, the very next thing that we have on our calendar, we have a need to go into executive session to, so that we can visit about personnel. But before we do, do we need to take a break? Is there?
There is treats.
Treats, that way anybody that wants to stay can, let's, let's take a little break and have treats. And then we, we actually, when we get our treats, can move in. Anything you have for us? I would entertain a motion for the, in the, for the executive session that we just had.
I make a motion that we accept the list that was presented by the building administrators for rehires for fiscal year twenty-five.
I'll second that.
Motion has been made to consider administrators, school administrators, list of rehires has been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Jeanette, let's go. All right, we have one more item on our action list. Wait, we don't? That was what we just took care of. I just sat and moved down one. We just took care of it. We're, we've moved into our discussion items and I clicked on that. Anybody have any future agenda items? What, you know what? I'm gonna, I, no. Anybody have any future agenda items that they would like to discuss coming in?
Is that a par?
Good job. Yeah, you're, you're not on you.
Sorry.
But we got a par. That's awesome.
That is so exciting.
Hey, we're on discussion items. Let's discuss that par. No, let's not.
Sorry.
Let's not. Besides that par, anybody, any future? We could put that on there and talk about how that really went, but I don't think it's prudent. Okay. We have had on our discussion list facility use of gyms and things. Is there, you weren't here when we were talking about that last time. So kind of not to put you out in the spotlight, Mr. Lurin, but that was one of the things that we wanted to continue to talk about possibly in your experiences and things. Is that still something we need to discuss?
Just from a community outreach standpoint, we have a lot of youth recreation, youth sports that like to partake of the use of the gym when it's available. And what I don't want to see is a rift occur between the community and the school district by being overzealous of making sh, of our, of our facilities, overzealous of protecting our facilities. In fact, that if we have a youth recreational team that has a majority or completely full of Weezer athletes, required to pay the fee that is on our policy every time they want to use the facility, as well as putting in there the million-dollar, you know, insurance policy as well. And I don't know how we come to fixing what appears to be a rift, if that makes sense.
So just part of the discussion, and I'm going to open it up, Mr. Dickerson, if you don't mind here just a minute, I'm going to ask you a question. But what we, the amount of time or the timeframe, correct me if I'm wrong, Amy, that we're looking at is, is basically right during basketball season.
Basketball season is the biggest push.
So towards the end, I'm gonna, I'm gonna open this up because it's part of this discussion, I think. Towards the end of our basketball season, we, we, so earlier, we created a policy dealing with our facilities. We, we saw that we had some issues that we had to try to work out. Towards the end of the season, Mr. Dickerson, and everybody else is gone. But did we, was there still some continuing issues? Or did it appear that we started to work those things out?
So there, the, the issue still was there.
Okay.
We still had to deal with that. And partly because we were, it was how we were looking at the policy. And maybe that's the question that we need to look at is, the policy kind of backs us into a corner on what we can, can and cannot say as to who can use the building and what we can charge and what we can't charge. And it's the policy that puts it in place. In the past, our old policy was kind of left up to us as the building administrator and as the person responsible for, you know, the campus. And so that was very nice because we looked at it and said, yeah, opportunity for Weezer kids, absolutely. We want them to use it. And it made it a lot easier for us to be able to, to say yes and no. And obviously, you know, we want, we want our community to use our building and give opportunities to kids. It's a good thing to have them at, at school and in the building. And so it, it just made it a lot easier when we looked at the situation and made a decision what we thought was best for the community, for Weezer High School. And, you know, when we have available gym space, why not? So.
If I could just, please. Do you think it'd be, it'd be worth it or behoove us to maybe put a committee together?
That's exactly what I was thinking. Continue on to have other.
To put a committee together with key players such as the building administrators and, and, and maybe some, some community folks that we can look at how we can do this without causing, or Mr. LaRue was mentioning, a rift between the community. We've got to look at the policy.
Yes, appropriately.
We, we amended the original policy. And I found we put it back in the administrator's hands. So I thought it was kind of working out, but maybe just a more, sort of more stringent look at it.
Right, yeah. When, once we amended it and kind of went back to where we were making the decisions, it was a lot easier for us to, to manage that, for sure.
I, I, I think that's a good recommendation that we can put that on the, on the future agenda and have, like, make that recommendation that we, we put together a committee and get the true stakeholders and, and do the right thing while protecting our facilities.
Right. And there's, I mean, there's some things that, I mean, will definitely have to be considered. Cleaning our buildings, there has to be, if we have people using the building, whether it's a community member or not, the building's getting dirty. We have to have somebody that cleans that up. And in the past, you know, we've had sports teams, hey, as long as you take care of it, we know that that's never going to be to the standard that we, that are, you know, in the building, what, what we want our building to look like. So we have to send a janitor there. There are some things that, costs that are incurred that we would want to make sure that we take care of that in some way, shape, or form. So, and that goes for the same with our auditorium. You know, using that sound system and everything else, we have to have our sound guy come up to the high school and he'll spend, you know, three hours in the evening sitting there, running that at, at no charge because we let a community member in to use the facility. We've got to figure out all of those components that come into play.
So, sorry, I just was trying to find the policy just to, because I thought that we kind of left it where the, the school administration could decide it. In this policy, forty-two, ten, it does say that school buildings can be used without cost by semi-educational organizations. But then it also says by the Department of Recreation, the city of Weezer. And they all say without charge, and it kind of depends on the administration. So I guess I'm confused. Oh, it's on assembly, sorry. Says it was adopted January of, or October of twenty-three and then updated in January of twenty-four.
Yeah, all we did was amend the, the part to go back to the administrators. And see, sort of.
So I guess I feel like it, you guys should be able to run that.
I guess, I guess for a future, for a future, put it on a future action item because, to discuss, going to a committee as, as a discussion item, this is, just gives us the opportunity. You know, we can't make any actions, but we can go back and discuss this in an action, in our action and develop a committee and do, you know, talk about those things, the, the cost that is, the cost it takes to keep our gyms open and clean and to recoup.
There's a, there's another component that, that we have to consider. And that is the use of our facilities for club sports, school programs that are being paid to come in and use it. We have, we have to think about all that. And any more club sports are the name of the game. And we're getting more and more club sports. And what we've got to think about is when we're opening up the gym for club basketball, but that person is a member of what other team and we're providing the opportunity at the same time, and that kid is choosing between a sport that the school offers and a club sport, and it's causing a rift within our coaches, that is something we have to, we're going to have to consider. And, and it's a, it's a, it's a battle that all schools are facing right now, is the battle of club sports.
And what about, what about viability?
Yeah, that.
Same thing, yep.
That's where the insurance comes into, into play.
If I could just repeat this again, task needed, put a committee together. And then we'll look at all these things and, and, and back review as we go and give you a benchmark. And we'll, we'll, we'll meet that benchmark and we can go from there. But remember, though, all these things we mentioned, it's already out there. It's already out there, what it costs for our, 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 our music man in the kind of auditorium. It's already out there, what it costs the custodian. So we're just going to be going back through and looking at the same things that's already, some, some, some components that's already out there. But we've never done that yet. So I think, I think we, we said before, if we're going to do it, let's get it, let's really go do it so people know going into it, how, how much they have to, if they have to pay, they have to pay. Because I can't, we can't ask Mike, Mr. Turner, to come in and sit there unless I'm going to pay you fifty bucks an hour or charge him fifty bucks an hour for, for, you know, electrical work, or not electrical work, but what he does in the auditorium. I just, if you charge me, we'll quite look at these things, Mr. Rush.
Andrea, do you have more, more to add, or I cut you off, sorry?
No, I just think we, I just feel like we need to be a little bit careful with, because I think it's easy for us, you know, in a small town to be like, oh, sure, you can use the gym. Oh, sure, you can use the gym. But then if we don't really have a set plan, it can also kind of push you in a bind sometimes if you have to say no to somebody and they say, oh, well, but you let so-and-so do it. You know, so.
We, we need clear, clear.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay. Any other discussion need at this time? This, this is going to come up again and we'll put some more thought, give more direction to Mr. Doolan and putting together a committee. But that's for a future action. Okay? Thank you. Is there communication information, anything that we need to let Melanie read at this time?
No, sir.
Get off the hook, Melanie. All right, we just have one more. Motion. All right, we just have one more motion that I would entertain.
I'll make a motion that we adjourn this meeting.
I'll second that motion.
Motion has been made and seconded that we adjourn this meeting. All those in favor?
Aye.